Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everybody silence your cellphones. For Ben ISD, Board of Trustees, an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, the audience may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting, so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antiveros. The time is 6:01 PM, 6:02 PM. This meeting is hereby called order. We have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. If you will all join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We will now have a statement from Mr. Rosenthal. Dave?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of a good friend and a treasure to this county, Mr. Jim Bab, who passed away last week. The county is really poor for it. He was an amazing man. He was just so caring, and he loved public service. As many of you know, he served in this seat for a year and a half. And he went out of his way to help people, especially children. I mean, he was an author when he was a dare agent, a dare officer. He wrote a book called Letters From Your Children. And he actually did a book tour with that. And he just had so many amazing stories to tell about that experience. He was tapped to head up the HPD Blue Crew, which was a community outreach program. And he was the guy in charge. He was such a community leader. He had such a big heart. And as I said, we really lost a treasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for making that statement on behalf of the board for our appreciation for Jim. Moving on, do we have any audience items this evening? We'll now move on to information items. Thank you, Jane. So we have one audience item this evening. Susan, is it Gatan? Gatan? You may come to the microphone, please, ma'am. Jason, will you time for us, please, sir?
I haven't heard a board meeting before, so...
That's okay. That's okay. So all you're going to do is you can speak into that microphone, and we're going to give you three minutes. And Mr. Burden is going to keep time for you, and he will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Susan Gatan. I'm a special education teacher at Forbend ISD, working for Armstrong Elementary School. I brought some items to the attention because some things did not go right for me as a teacher. I don't think that the board is aware of this, or it wouldn't have happened. I was discriminated against because of my height. My vice principal called me short three times in front of my principal and my CCC. She denied it. They wrote me up because I used a chair when they didn't accommodate me with a stool or something. Then they wrote me up for wearing high heels because I didn't... Just to be honest with you, I don't know any of you. I didn't want my vice principal using that word about me in front of a parent. We had an ARD meeting. And, you know, it's just like, it's the way she said it. The way I look at it is, I'm this size, if she wants to call me a name, that's her problem. This is the size my parents made me, so I'm perfect to them. That's all that I need, right? But writing me up for wearing high heels, not okay. They told me that I missed a lot of time. I was out for two weeks because I had a knee fusion in this knee. I was told that I was a danger to myself and others. I didn't hurt anybody, but they kept sending me home. They called my doctor to talk to them about my job, because I teach special ed. But my doctor knows I teach special ed. I have the scars to prove it, literally the scars. So that's why I love my particular job, my job. Right now with these students, this whole year, I've never had a student hit me or punch me or anything, so I'm really trying to hold on to it. I was out for a whole month, right around February 15th. I had an accident February 14th. I was out for an entire month. I hurt myself from my neck all the way down to my knee. So they said I had contusions. They didn't really treat me. They just told me to rest at home. And I was told that I could not keep up. Well, you know, I had been out. I'm a late start, so I already missed all the summer training. I missed the first two months of school. Then I started. Then I was out for two weeks because they wanted me to stay home, not because I wanted to stay home. And then, of course, I missed a month because of the accident. So I had, I think in there, I slipped a picture of the floor where I had tripped. It was like a little, not even a real heel, kind of a flat shoe that I was wearing. My heel caught on it, and that's how I tripped. I got hurt. And like I'm saying, I sprained my neck all the way down to my knee, so it was a lot of pain, but I just wasted it.
30 seconds.
Okay. They also did not let me use the bathroom, so I had an accident on myself. I was told, "You don't need to go." And I think that's about all I can say, less than 30 seconds. Thank you. I would like to be reinstated. That's basically it. My vice principal's leaving, and that's the person who's usually harassing me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
So do you ask questions, or do I sit down?
No, ma'am, and we can't respond to you. We can only talk about things that are on our agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we're all here.
Yeah, we're all here.
Thank you. Okay, just in time, we're moving on to information items, and we're going to start with the CoTeach Collaborative Teaching Update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. Deanna Saavedra, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Dina Hill will present a report on our special education work during the last year. Deanna?
Yes, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Dupree. I'm pleased this evening to introduce Dr. Dina Hill, who's going to be providing an update and some data that we've gathered regarding our CoTeach implementation for year one. So, Dr. Hill?
Nope, there we go. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Madam President, and Dr. Dupree. We are, you have been provided a copy, a comprehensive CoTeach report, and I know that some of you have had the chance to read that. Whoops, sorry about that. So, here we go. So this evening, we're going to briefly review the report. We're going to be looking at several items tonight. First of all, we're going to briefly review the 16-17 Expectations about CoTeach. We did, as requested, set out the year by talking about how we're going to collect data and analyze the CoTeach effectiveness, so we're going to talk about that tonight. We're going to discuss the outcomes, and then we're going to discuss next steps. So if you recall, we did a report, I believe, or we came to you back in January, and we talked about CoTeach. Just a reminder of the implementation plan. All campuses were required to implement at least one CoTeach class. During the year, we provided all kinds of professional development. We started back in the summer. We also provided professional development to teachers and to administrators. And then we did a great deal of coaching onsite at the campuses to help with the CoTeach implementation. At the end of the year, we also brought in the teachers and celebrated the successes, and we identified model classrooms that will be training facilities for next year. Okay, so going into the actual report, we wanted to, you know, ask ourselves four questions to talk about, how do you measure the CoTeach effectiveness? And so the first question was really basically about instructional outcomes. And so the question we asked is, you know, did students receiving instruction in CoTeach setting perform better or, you know, the same or better as their counterparts who receive instruction in a non-CoTeaching setting? And so we're going to talk about that piece. We also wanted to look at our least restrictive environment data, LRE, we often call it. And so we asked ourselves, did the CoTeach model have a positive impact on the students' least restrictive environment? And we're going to review the data that we've collected to determine that. We also wanted to know after one-year implementation, what CoTeach delivery model was the most utilized? And I believe, if you recall, back in January, we talked about how there's different types of models. And, you know, we have the one teach, one assist, where, you know, there's one teacher actually doing the instruction and one assisting. And we have all these different models to where you have teachers doing parallel teaching and all kinds of things. And so we talked about the effectiveness of each model, and so we want to discuss tonight how we did in that area. And then the last question we asked is, how did our CoTeach partnerships and the campus administrators rate the effectiveness of the CoTeach implementation this year? So those were the questions we asked for this research or this brief. The other thing that we did is that we, you know, we have 176 CoTeach teams throughout the district. And so we knew we couldn't collect the data and analyze the data on all 176 teams. So we created basically a CoTeach monitoring system, where we took a sample, you know, representative from across the district, from each campus across the district, and created a group so that we could use that group to do all of the analysis. And so sometimes you'll see that reference in the report, and I believe we had a question from one of the board members as, what is the CoTeach monitoring system? So that is just a way for us to basically evaluate the effectiveness and follow these students over time. Okay, so in your more involved report, you're going to see many different charts in relation to student outcomes. And so we didn't want to spend time tonight going over every graph that you have in your report, but we did, I wanted to kind of walk you through this one graph, because you're going to see it repeated in the report, and just make sure that you, you know, understand the way that we designed this. So this is an example here of the 3rd through 8th grade special ed math STAR results. And so what we looked at was the CoTeach special ed students in the CoTeach classroom, comparing them to other special ed students that were not in a CoTeach classroom. And so when we looked at that, you see the red are the CoTeach students, and the gray are special ed students that aren't in CoTeach. And what you can see, for example, in this 3rd through 8th grade math, based on STAR results, index one, if you recall, is basically, did they pass or fail? And you can see that in this particular math, we did very well. Our CoTeach students, they were identified as special ed, scored 51% of them passed the STAR test, and as compared to 38% of special ed students not receiving CoTeach. The index two deals with all of the progress measures. And so, you know, we want to see students really performing high in the accelerated area and the expected, and we would expect the limited growth, we want that to be, you know, smaller than students not in CoTeach. So you see the stars here to kind of indicate that's where we performed well, and we're happy about that. And so in your handout, we have the same kind of chart, not only for 3rd through 8th grade math, but we also have it for reading. And then you also will see, you know, the end of course exams. And all of that is arranged in two different ways. One, we're comparing special ed students in CoTeach to special ed students not in CoTeach. And then you also have blue graphs that are comparing general ed students that are receiving instruction in CoTeach compared to general ed students receiving instruction not in CoTeach. So it's a lot of data in there, but I wanted to make sure that you were able to understand those graphs. And overall, what we found is, it was varied, and it's very difficult, especially this first year, for looking at STAR data to really make a determination of, was CoTeach effective when you're just looking at the STAR data? Some of the students that we saw, for example, general ed students maybe didn't make as much progress in the CoTeach setting as they did in the regular ed setting. Well, we would need to go in and really examine those classrooms where the general ed students didn't make as much progress to find out why. But it's a good starting point, and what we'll do now is we'll be following these cohorts over the next couple of years to monitor the effectiveness. So that's how we looked at the STAR outcomes. We also looked at least restrictive environment, which we call LRE. And so this graph talks about students that, you know, all the students that were in CoTeach for this school year, and we compared their least restrictive environment data from this year in May and to compare it to May 2016. So what we found when we looked at those students is, 60% of them did not have a change in LRE, meaning what we assume is that they were already in general ed, but they were not receiving CoTeach. They were probably receiving in-class support, you know, so they were already in the general ed setting. But we did see 27% of our students did improve their LRE. So we would assume these students had been previously served in a resource setting or another special ed setting, and now are in CoTeach. And so overall, you know, although this, overall, this is not what we expected, because we expected more of an increase here, but that doesn't mean anything negative. Because if you look at this next slide, overall, all of our students with disabilities across the district, what we found was that our LRE improved. You saw 50, last year, in 1516, we were at 48.80% students, and this year, we went up to 55% roughly. And basically, that's saying they're spending more time in the general ed setting. The more restrictive, we want to see kids spend less time in special ed all day, and so we're right where we need to be. So I guess the important thing about this piece with LRE is that just implementing CoTeach, I believe, and really focusing on inclusive mindsets, overall, we're seeing good things happening in relation to LRE. So then we also looked at the CoTeach approaches observed. So, you know, these are based on campus administrator and special ed administrators doing walkthroughs in the class and learning, you know, when they walked into the classroom and did an observation, what kind of approach did they see? And of course, you know, the one teach, one assist was the most used, and that's not the one that we want in the long run. But we also know during that first year, those first-year partnerships, this is very common of what's expected. Until those teachers can build trust and get to know each other, it's difficult for them to, you know, CoTeach in a true partnership. And so this is very typical of the research when CoTeach begins. As we move forward and we look at those same teams that are together for next year, we want to see them moving along to one of the other more, what we deem as more effective, have more effective outcomes, such as the station teaching and the alternative teaching and the team teaching. One other thing that we will have to know, you know, we'll have to keep up with is, we have some new teams next year. So we'll have to look at new teams, and we'll have to look at returning teams to differentiate and see how they're making progress. And then we also did surveys. So we wanted to really be able to get the teachers' input and the administrators' input. And so we did a middle-of-the-year survey, and we did an end-of-the-year survey. And overall, the teacher ratings found that the most difficult area for them was instructional planning, which we'd already talked about back in January, and instructional presentation. And that's really what that's referring to, is basically, that goes back to the content knowledge of the teachers, really feeling confident to teach in those classes, especially some of the special ed teachers who haven't had that opportunity in the past. We also asked campus administrators to rate, you know, where they thought their teachers were compared to where our special ed administrators thought the teachers were, and we saw some variance there. So, you know, that means that we need to calibrate with our campus administrators to make sure that we're both, you know, we're on the same page as far as expectations. And so, looking forward to next year, you know, what are our next steps? What are our big rocks? So, you know, the big piece here, I think, is campus culture. And we've talked about this before, and the importance of the campus administrator leading that charge. And so in reflecting and looking through this report and the data that we collected, we believe it's, you know, we need to really make sure our campus administrators have clear expectations about their role in implementing CoTeach. They have to really understand how important it is on that master schedule to get that common planning in, and how important it is to lead that charge. And so we're going to be working on the campus culture. You know, not only does this impact CoTeach, but it also impacts, you know, just some of the things that we had going on this year to ensure our students have just as much opportunity to attend events and be involved, and all the things that their non-disabled peers are at their own home campus. The other big thing is common planning time. And again, we've talked about this. It really goes back to the master schedule, but it is crucial for CoTeach to be effective, that that special ed teacher and that general ed teacher have time during their instructional day to work together and plan. And then the CoTeach models, so what we want to see, like I talked about a little bit earlier, we want to see those CoTeach models move. We want to see more effective CoTeach models throughout the school year. And then the last piece is the content knowledge, and really helping particularly our special ed teachers feel comfortable about teaching content. And we do believe with our move to Schoology and the work that we're doing with the curriculum rewrites, that this is going to help. So, oh, so, that is a very brief, under 10 minutes review, so.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We appreciate your brevity, and we appreciate your work in this, on the report. We have questions from the trustees, Ms. Heliger.
I do. Good evening, everybody. Haven't seen these people in a long time. Thank you for your report. I appreciate the report. I do have a question. One of the things, when I'm looking at the extensive report that you provided to us around the general ed numbers, what are we, I know you stated in your presentation that you weren't quite sure why that's happened. What are we going to do to try to figure out why those numbers are kind of lopsided? So what is our plan of action for that?
So I think what you're talking about is, in the general, in the CoTeach classrooms, when we have, you know, we talked about a third of those kids are identified special ed, but the other two-thirds are students that don't receive special ed services. So I think what's going to be really important is, we look at the placement of those general ed students. Who are those students? So for example, we have sometimes students who are English language learners, who have dyslexia and served under 504, and also perhaps just have some, you know, some significant needs but don't qualify for special education. We would want to be very careful that we don't place all of those students that are technically general ed in that classroom. Because now we've created a classroom, although we do have two teachers, we've created a classroom that's not very diverse. So one of the things that we're going to have to do, and, you know, is really kind of talk about with our principals as we go to campuses, the makeup of the CoTeach class. We spent some time this year really talking about special ed students and how we were going to determine which special ed students we thought would be appropriate to recommend to an ARD committee for CoTeach. We need to continue that work, but we also need to bring in the discussion of general ed students and talk about those classrooms. We don't want to overwhelm the teachers in having, you know, we need to have diversified classrooms. Or what we're going to do is create a classroom similar to what we had in resource. So that's one of the things that we suspect is happening.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my next question would be, I was looking at the implementation plan, how are we monitoring goals for the next, I consider this phase one, in my mind? How are we managing goals for CoTeach for this next phase? And I don't think I, maybe I didn't understand it, but I know that you stated a lot of key events and activities, but I didn't see any measurable type of activities in the plan.
So in the, well, there's a couple of things that we're doing there. And, you know, and I'm so sorry, and I forgot to, Stephanie Burns, Stephanie, stand up. Stephanie is one of our special ed administrators that we hired this past year. She is our special ed program manager for program improvement. So one of her primary roles is to help with implementations and help with data and making sure we're on track. She's, really want to thank her, because she worked very hard on this report and gathering the data. And so not only do we, you know, assume, and we hope that we'll have a strategic plan goal with CoTeach again, like we did last year, but we also have this, that you have in this report, is kind of, we call it an IEP for CoTeach. So it's basically, you know, similar to a student's IEP. And what we're planning to do is the same thing. I mean, we have, we have this particular goal of CoTeach implementation will not only be a strategic plan initiative goal, but also will be in our district plan, and we'll break out as far as all of the activity. We'll have, you know, SMART goal formats and who's responsible to ensure that this is continuing to, you know, to be implemented, and then how are we sustaining it as we go forward?
So then, so we should, we should expect another IEP plan presented to us or given to us at a later date closer to school starting, because this is the 2016-2017 plan that's presented here today. So I would assume that it will be one for 2017-18 for this, the second phase?
Is it?
Well, what you have, what you have in the report, what you have in the report in Appendix D is, sorry.
I'm looking all over the floor.
Okay.
Sorry. What you have in the report in Appendix D is, you're right, it's the implementation plan that's currently in place. But on that last column, if you look at 16-17, there's a progress update. So based on that progress update, then we'll, and the data that we've collected, will, as you said, make updates to what that looks like, and if there's any additional goals or any gaps that we see that have not been addressed in the initial IEP that we drafted.
And we are basically staying the course with our goals. And certainly, you know, we'll be happy to provide additional information if you would like, that has some more specific metrics in it, because we have all the information here.
Just one last question. Can you provide me a, the same graphs that you have in this detail by school?
Yes, I think we can.
Okay.
We'll work on getting that completed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes. Thank you for that presentation. When you talk about having a CoTeach, a special ed teacher in a general ed setting, typically, what is the ratio of general ed to special ed kids in one of those classrooms?
So our guidelines and what the research says is that no more than one-third of the classroom should be identified as special ed students.
Okay. And then what you were saying is amongst those general ed students, some of them could have maybe situations where they may not have been identified or not, you know, not labeled, I guess, as special ed?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, and you said in order to address potential problems where special ed teachers may not necessarily know their content, because that's, that kind of worries me when I hear that, because if you have two-thirds of the kids in there that are general ed kids being taught by somebody who doesn't really know the content, then are they potentially getting hurt?
Well, and that's probably why, when you see teams that have worked together for a while, special ed teachers feel confident with the content. I mean, they don't have to know all of the content, because they bring that special ed piece that can really help that general ed teacher. But a true CoTeach classroom, when you walk in, you can't tell the CoTeacher, the special ed from the general ed. But that's not going to happen until they feel comfortable. So general ed teachers most likely are not going to turn that, the reins over until they feel comfortable. And the special ed teacher doesn't want that either. So we want to give them the opportunity to learn content and to increase that knowledge so they do feel comfortable to move to that next phase.
Okay. So I think in order for this to work, then I think you need to try to keep those teams together, you know, as much as possible without moving them around. together, you know, as much as possible without moving them around, and so that, that they can learn from each other.
Yeah. Yeah, and one of the problems, I think, we have a lot of new teams, and so, one of the, that's one of the things that we'll be working with campus administrators is, obviously, we understand if teachers leave the school or the district. If they're on that campus, though, we want to work to keep those teams intact. So, that's one, one of the things that we'll be doing this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any additional questions?
I have a couple. And I didn't send them in in advance, and that was sort of on purpose. So, I'm glad to hear you talk about the stacking the classes, that's what we call it in the, in the parent world, and that was my first thought as well. So, I'm glad you guys are going to be looking into that, because really what studies show is that special ed kids learn best usually in GT classes. And it's because you're differentiating instruction anyway, and sometimes, a lot of times pairing the higher level kids, or even the kids identify GT that learn creatively, that's how kids with disabilities learn. So, my first question is, have we thought about being a little more purposeful in how we, and how we make these classes up? I know from my own experience, my, one of my daughter's best years was when she was educated in a GT class. So, have we thought about that?
No, we, no, well, we've absolutely thought about hand-selecting the kids during the classroom, and we've talked about that in our training, but I think the big piece is the monitoring of that. And so, back in May, our assistant directors and program managers, you know, had conversations, went to each campus to talk about how they were selecting the students and had those conversations. But now what we'll need to be doing is really starting to monitor early to make sure that we're following through. And as far as, are you, did you also ask, are we also looking at GT?
Well, the reason I ask that is because I know we hand-select fillers for GT classes all the time. So, you know, typically, we look at the kids that are more advanced, but have we thought about looking at that as sort of a CoTeach, from a CoTeach perspective, that it would help our gifted students as well as our special ed students? And, you know, I know studies have shown that that has been successful. So, you, I mean, you don't have to answer that today, but I'm throwing it out there for us to maybe consider as we, as we move forward from a goal perspective, maybe we should think about that a little bit. I've seen personal success from it, and I know, I know studies support that. Generally, STAR is not a good measure for kids with disabilities, and so, I sort of take that data with a grain of salt. So, my question for us, or my challenge for us, is I know we're, we've got an assessment goal in our strategic plan, and so, I want to know how we're going to apply that to our students with disabilities across the board, and particularly in these CoTeach classes. Because my, my daughter, you can CoTeach her all day and she's never going to pass STAR. That's no real indicator that CoTeach is not working for her, because it is working for her. So, I would challenge us to find another measure, because STAR, I do not believe is a good measure. We're looking at this data, and it didn't really tell me anything. The other piece of that is that it depends on the disability. If you have an intellectual disability, obviously, like my daughter, you're going to struggle to pass STAR. If you have some other disability, like a hearing impairment, and you're identified special ed, that's not really going to impact your performance on STAR. So, I would request that we maybe disaggregate this data, if we are going to look at it, so that we can see, yeah, I mean, I think we need to dig into the numbers a little bit, because it's not really telling us all the information.
Yeah, we have, we talked about that, it's just too hard to compare.
Yeah.
And it's also too hard to compare special ed students and CoTeach special ed. Now, if we take a special ed student with an intellectual disability that has similar to a special ed kid, those are good comparisons.
That's apples to apples.
So, and, and just on the, you know, we have the progress measure for STAR, but I think the most important thing is, you know, where was this child when they came into our classroom in August, and where's this child when they're leaving us that first week of, of June? And I think that's the important piece that we want to measure. And it's not only STAR, academic performance, but we also have to look at some of those soft skills, and how, and how do we measure those in a way? And I know Ms. James had sent an email about that, and so, we had talked about, you know, maybe having some focus groups to really talk to students, to gather information from parents, because those are the kind of things that you don't necessarily get on a survey. So, we've got to find a way to, because we know there's really benefit, and, and it's how do we collect that data to show the significance of students being, you know, educated in that general ed environment with their non-disabled peers?
Right, exactly.
So, we're going to be working.
It's hard to measure, but STAR is definitely not going to be the one.
Yeah, so we're going to be working. This is kind of our first go-round with really implementing a model or a new initiative, and really putting those metrics in place. So, we learned a little bit from this, how we want, want to do some things differently next year, and, and we'll definitely be digging deeper.
The other thing I would suggest as a parent, having seen this, the Teach Assist model is also going to impact the general ed students. If you don't have a true CoTeach, then Teach Assist is going to impact what those general ed students are really getting out of that as well, in my opinion. I was glad to hear you mention the training. I think, I think another disconnect is our general education teachers also need, need to be trained, because when you have a third of the classroom that's, you know, I think it's not just the special education teachers in the content area, our gen ed teachers need more training, and to feel more comfortable to take on the role of doing the assist in the classroom while the other teacher is teaching. I would just throw that out there. It, it does disturb me a little bit that our special ed teachers lack some content, because if they're teaching in special ed, more segregated environments, they still need to have that content. So, I'm glad to hear we're going to raise the level, because no matter what, they're teaching our kids who are legally supposed to have access to the general ed curriculum. So, they need to know that curriculum if they're going to teach it. That's it.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to.
Mrs. James, if you have a follow-up.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Since my name was mentioned, I'm, I just want to reiterate what Mrs. Tosan was saying about the assessment piece, because I think if we are relying on STAR, then we're not really doing our kids a favor, our special ed kids or our general ed kids. And we've talked about, you know, a growth mindset and getting kids from where they are, and if they need to be caught up, or if they need to be, you know, if we expect them to progress a year's worth, those are the kinds of ways we need to be thinking about it and talking about it. So, thank you, Mrs. Tosan, for mentioning that, because it applies here, it applies to our conversation last month about our reading program, and, and how, how much growth kids are making in that, and, and, you know, pretty much every conversation we have about student achievement, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we just want to thank you for your continued support. I mean, this is a big deal, we recognize that, but we know it's the right thing for our kids, and we appreciate your support with CoTeach.
Well, it is the right thing, so, keep doing it, culture change is the big deal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is our internal audit reports. Dr. Dupree, Mr. Rice, were you going to open for Mr. Gibson?
I am not.
Okay.
I am going to invite Mr. Greg Gibson forward to please give the reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Gibson, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. My pleasure to be here.
I'm not sure you're on.
How about now?
It sounds better.
All right. Members of the board, Dr. Dupree, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to present three internal audit reports that were completed this year. Tonight, we're going to, I'll give you a quick introductions of the major project teams for each of these projects, and then I'll be going through the safety and security audit first, then the Jacobs monitoring project. Jacobs is the program manager for our bond program, and then the job site safety audit is the third audit report, and then there'll be plenty of time for questions during and throughout, and at the end of the presentation. I served as the project director on all of these projects. I'm also the program director for the internal audit program. Krista Tally was our lead auditor on, or one of our lead auditors on the Jacobs project, and she worked with our subcontractor, and then she was also involved in report editing on, on all of the work. Cheyenne Roth is our project manager on each of these projects, and she is also the program manager for the internal audit program and the board audit committee. We had two subcontractors that worked with us on these projects. PMCM2 worked with us on the Jacobs monitoring project and the job site safety project. Their particular expertise is construction management, and Facilities Engineering Associates did most of the work on the safety and security audit. So, these are the audit areas of the security, safety and security audit. The, the focus was on school facility safety. So, when you hear about a safety audit, there are a lot of things that can be construed, but the bulk of our work that was requested by Fort Bend was to focus on the, the safety and security of school facilities. We also looked at the, some management organizational issues such as staffing and information systems, but I would venture to say that at least 90% of our work really focused on the safety and security of our school facilities. We visited 10 schools, they were judgmentally selected by the audit team, and what that means is that we selected, and we do a lot of judgmental selection in our internal audits as opposed to random sampling, and the reason we do a judgmental selection is we want to make sure we have representation of school types, representation geographically around the, around the district, and also the age of the facility, because sometimes that will drive different findings. And so, that is what drove our judgmental selection of the 10 schools. We assessed each school against 73 security elements in seven categories, and the categories are basically the ones that I showed you, I'll go back up to them. Locking systems and hardware, access control, communication systems, site and perimeter systems, video surveillance, building systems, egress and refuge. We, there was a scoring, this protocol was developed by our audit team, we, they had actually applied this protocol on prior engagements, but we did do some fine tuning for Fort Bend. But a scoring procedure was made for each subcomponent, and then also at the category level. And it was a, based on a one to five, this scoring methodology is explained in the report, and five being the best, five actually being perfect, 100% functionality, and then 25% stages for good, fair, poor, and unacceptable. So, this diagram shows how these seven categories scored overall. So, there was only one category that was below the 3.0, which is the good, and that was video surveillance. And this was being addressed through the bond program, and the administration can describe what all's been done. I don't, I think, historically, funding was an issue for video surveillance and may continue to be, but this was the one area that was during our site work, and keep in mind, a lot of this work, this project was actually started in the prior fiscal year. So, not fiscal year 17, but fiscal year 16. So, it was before a lot of the construction program was begun or completed, and so, that drove that. But you can see the range of, from 2.7 to over 4.0 for the different areas, and then for each school, was, each school was rated in these areas, and then there were sub-areas under that that, that averaged up to these scores. We noted several commendations while we were out doing our site work. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I would talk about a few of them. We consistently, consistently saw clear lines of sight and high degree of visibility on the school grounds, and what that means is that there's been, you know, usually when you think of landscaping, you think of landscaping that looks good, you've actually designed your landscaping for it to foster a safe school environment, and that is a great thing from a design standpoint. Also, the, most facilities contain master ventilation switches that can be shut off to limit potential damage in the event of a toxic gas release. There were other utility system master switches and other things that are really good at, at shutting down things and limiting the, the damage to other building components. The second one on this page, the, most schools had lockable areas adjacent to gathering places where students and staff can take refuge to give law enforcement time to respond during emergency situations. And I know that when I was in school, they had the, those chains that kept the, the doors closed, and that used to be used to keep kids, or keep people from coming in, but then we discovered that it can also keep people from getting out. And so, now the door is designed, they contain pushbar exits that don't allow the use of chains. And so, it's interesting over the last generation how our view of some of these security things has changed. I'm going to go through the audit recommendations, again, not all of them, as we, I'm going to cover them by major category, the first one being locking systems and hardware. The first one is to standardize locking systems and enhance door closure mechanisms at each facility. Again, a lot of this is due to age, and our construction standards are now appropriately updated to do this for all future schools, it's just a matter of getting some of these other school systems up to date. Also, provide key lock boxes at each facility and access to the box for potential emergency In the area of access control, there were several recommendations. One was to ensure that secured vestibules are installed at all district facilities. This was also a funding limitation in years past, and I believe the bond program is addressing some of these, perhaps not all. Secured vestibule is really important so that you have a secured environment when you come into this school, so that you can't actually get into the school building itself until you pass through the secured vestibule. The next recommendation is to enhance the processing of visitors at all district facilities, and this has to do more with the consistent processing as well as following standards. We just saw some inconsistencies and thought that that could be improved. Also, some of the portable buildings did not have adequate fencing around them, and it was easy to go directly to a portable without having to go through the school's security. And so, the fencing will help, help take care of that. And keep in mind, I said this at the beginning, I believe, but funding, the districts is always in a position where it has to evaluate safety versus fiscal responsibility, and so, it's easy to say, it's easy for us to recommend, go do this, make it safer, but we also acknowledge that this board and the administration have to deal with the fiscal realities of being able to do everything that is recommended with respect to safety and security. The next area is communication systems. The recommendation aid is to perform regular audits of the Raptor software system to keep contact information up to date. Raptor is a, really a state-of-the-art system that identifies sex offenders, and so, when someone comes and checks into the school, they put, go through this Raptor system, and it can immediately notify you if you've got a, a risk. We don't fully utilize the system, and we don't always keep everything update. The things that need to be updated are the, the people we need to contact, as well as the database itself. We have to go through a process where we download that information so that we have the most current information when potential intruders try to come on campus. The functionality of, of Raptor, you can actually configure it to automatically notify people through text or other communication means if there's a hit, if there's a, if a risk is identified, so that you don't have to manually send an email to anybody, the system can do that for you. So, we, our recommendation about Raptors, it's a great system, and we think we can get a little bit more out of it. I'm going to move on to management and organization. We do not have an electronic system where we track all of our safety and security incidents. We do a lot of this manually now. And so, one of the reasons to do this is obviously for efficiency. Another reason is that you can track data elements electronically that can be converted to key performance indicators that can help you allocate your safety and security resources, and so, that is recommendation number 12. Other recommendations, perform drills for specific emergency situations. So, we all, all the campuses have crisis procedures, manuals, but they're drills that can be done for specific types of emergency situations, and we think that ought to be done more consistently across schools. We think that ought to be done more consistently across schools. The last recommendation, you'll notice in the back of this report, we actually made some recommendations to revise the district's construction standards. And what this appendix does is it makes specific reference to the actual guideline. And then below that, we, if we think it's okay, we say it's okay. And if we want, if we think a change should be made, we identify the specific change. And that's mentioned in the appendix to the report. You'll notice that in most of our audit reports, we have priorities assigned to our recommendations. We didn't do that here because it was safety and security. And it's, while some may be higher or lower risk, we felt that all of these were important. And so that's why you didn't see a priority ranking. I'm going to move on to the Jacobs monitoring, if that's, if that's okay. I'll go all the way through this, and then we can do questions at the end. The Jacobs monitoring project addressed how well the Fort Bend ISD is monitoring the program manager Jacobs through this bond program. And we looked at it from the aspects of program performance, contract compliance, staffing, and progress reporting. Jacobs appears to have met its contractual obligations with respect to staffing. Fort Bend internally had some difficulty filling some key positions last, late last summer and fall. And so that affected its ability to do all the things that it needed to do for a while. But all of those have been filled in 2000, either late '16 or in 2017. Most of the project's schedules up until March 2017 that were in the monthly progress reports were based on the bid package contract dates as opposed to the actual project dates. So in some cases, there were multiple projects combined into a bid packet under a single contract. And so the dates that were in the system were not wrong. They were just the, they were at a contract level. And so if you wanted to know what the project deadlines for individual project were, it may not necessarily reflect that, those dates because it was at the contract level. This was changed in April after we noted it, and all those dates now reflect the actual project level dates. During our work, the audit team found no documentation that referred specifically to cost adjustment sessions. And I put these in quotes because the contract with Jacobs specifically mentioned cost adjustment sessions and that these need to be conducted under certain criteria if the expected cost is going to be above a certain percentage, either in the design phase or in the construction phase. It really lasts, you know, throughout the project. Jacobs just didn't call these meetings cost adjustment sessions. So they, they maintained a very good information system, a project management information system. And so we went and searched the database for cost adjustment sessions, couldn't find anything. They did provide us some information, the district provided us some information of some cost savings efforts, cost savings efforts that occurred. And so this is a, we think it would be easier for Fort Bend to monitor Jacobs if they actually require them to use the term cost adjustment sessions in the meetings that are really well documented in the project management information systems. Site observations were not always conducted by Jacobs or Fort Bend in accordance with construction management procedures. A site observation is just that, going out to checking on the construction activity. Some of this had to do with Fort Bend staff positions not being able to be hired until the latter part of last year. And I think the, the last position was filled early this year. Even after all the staffing was taken care of, there were still a few exceptions, but it was much improved from, from earlier. These supplemental program and progress reporting could have improved Fort Bend's ability to monitor Jacobs' activity and performance. And this relates to internal project management measures. The board level reporting contains a lot of information, and we were pleased with the level of the board reporting in terms of metrics and indicators at a global level and at a school level. Our recommendation was more for the administration to be tracking some additional measures internally, and we included those in our report. So here are the recommendations, and some of these are obvious based on what I just described. Implement controls to ensure timely occurrence of site observations. Establish checkbox indicators on prologue. Prologue is your project management information system, and you can actually configure it to have a checkbox. So if there are any outstanding issues from a site observation that need action, you can actually do that so that you don't forget about it. And I think this has already been configured. Recommendation three is take steps to mitigate cost escalation during a program, and we have some specific strategies in the report for that. Four is ensure that future construction contracts hold contractors accountable for project level deadlines. We do a really good job of contract level deadlines, but there are additional things we could do to make sure that interim deadlines for specific projects could be met, and we can hold the contractors accountable for. And then I mentioned the additional metrics for internal progress reporting. With that, I'm going to move on to the job site safety audit. This was a different audit in that we, similar to the safety and security, but we were going on site specifically to monitor active construction where there was school in session. And so this was done, the board felt like this was important to make sure that our kids were safe and that our safety procedures were being followed. And so we did, three different times during the past year, we did unannounced visits to these schools where there was construction activity going on. And again, we applied a protocol based on your safety procedures that we used as a, as a protocol for conducting our, our audit. So we did a scoring similar to what you saw on the safety and security audit. And, but what we did after we were done is we immediately informed the administration of any, any findings, whether they were considered high priority, medium priority, low priority. And they, these are, the priorities are identified on this one because some of them were of low priority. But we, we notified the administration immediately, and then you will see in our report shortly that as we moved from first, first set of site visits to second set of site visits to our third set of site visits, many of the issues were addressed. And by the third site visit, most of the items were minor at that time. We noted commendations in this work as well. Virtually all interior work was scheduled for nights, weekends, and breaks when students would not be in the building. All exterior noisy work was well communicated and managed as to not interrupt the school day. And we found that school principals consistently were well communicated with and notified well in advance of the construction activity going on at their school sites. That was very consistent among all the schools was the communication with the principals. And that is really important when you're going to be doing construction on their school during school hours. So these are the findings, and the findings are organized by the dates. We combined October and January because there was only one school that was under construction when we were here in October that had students, that was an active school site at the time. So we combined October and January for the audit reporting, and you'll just see these. The lack of proper fencing between, again, this is not about the school safety, it's about the construction job site. And so you'll hear about fencing. This is different fencing from what we talked about in safety, safety and security. This is about fencing, that's fencing off the construction area on the, on the site. And so we noted findings like that. We designated the priority. We mentioned the next column is the procedures manual, the guidelines, the specific reference number that related to the procedure, and then the number of campuses where we observed this finding. So I'm not going to read through all these, but there were two high, higher priority items. These were addressed by the second visit, and most of these were addressed by the third visit. So these are more findings from the October 16th and January 2017 job site safety visits. Fencing around the job site again, insufficient space for students to escape from portable unit in case of an emergency. Not all of these had references in the procedures manual, but we noted them nonetheless. So by April, we had far fewer instances, and they were lower priority. And the only thing that was consistent among all of them was the lack of contact names and phone numbers on any of the construction trailers. Again, this wasn't mentioned in the procedures manual. It's not a life or death matter. It's more of a convenience for those, and a, and a good security measure while there's going, while there's construction going on at the site. That concludes my presentation of three reports. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them the best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Are there questions from the trustees?
Just one question.
Mr. George.
So Gibson, that's very informative. And one question I have about the safety and security area access control. Do we have a number of schools which still we don't have a vestibule installed?
I believe the administration would need to address that question. We looked at a sample, and so I don't know what the.
Yes, we, the majority still do not. But most, I think all are being built during the 2014 bond program, which is scheduled to complete over the next two years.
Well, next two years.
So they're in the process right, and many are having them built even this summer. But they're all being, they're all scheduled to be completed during the bond program.
Why is said delay in that? Because I thought it is, it's an important item, in my opinion. And we had, at least a few times, we had discussion about this, which is concerned some schools I go to, we could just walk through, you know, somebody could simply walk, you know, divert the attention of the clerk in the front or whoever, and somebody could walk into the school facility without any problem. And kind of, to me, it concerns me.
Well, no, we're, I mean, if you go back, I guess, to 2013 when we started developing the safety and security plan, they were included in there as a high priority. They were then included in the 2014 bond. And, and the bond program, phase one, was the new construction of the new schools, which we had to get going because of enrollment growth. And then phase two included the vestibules, as I best understand it.
Okay.
So we are moving them as rapidly as we can through the design.
So, so you believe in the next couple of years, every one of our schools are going to have security access?
Chief, I think that's a fair assessment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Do we have other questions? Ms. Heliger.
Thank you for your report. I guess this is to Dr. Dupree, our chief writer. One of the recommendations under safety was to increase police patrol staff across campuses, specifically at elementary schools. So as I dig into this, based on the report, it states that there's increased crime. I'm assuming that the elementary schools and why we feel like we need to have more police officers with our little bitty children.
I'll let Chief Ryder address that, and maybe Greg might want to talk a little bit about the context of the recommendation there as well.
Well, good evening. And yes, that was one of the recommendations. One of the things that we've talked about, it's not because of the increased crime at the elementary schools. As you've noticed over the last couple of years, the, the perception of the relationship between the community and police is at odds, right? And so one of the things that we think is important to build these relationships in our schools, our, our students are going to see our officers from the sixth grade all the way through the 12th grade and then beyond. So at the elementary level, that gives us an opportunity to build those relationships at the, at a young age. But also from a, from a reaction standpoint, or a, from a, from a response standpoint to something at the elementary school, it would give us somebody who's in very close proximity to that elementary school to respond. We have parents and students there, staff members. Things happen at elementary, so there, there are crimes, there's thefts, and there's school zones that need to be enforced and things like that. Right now, we don't have police patrol. So we have officers that are stationed at middle schools and at high schools, and we have to pull them from their campuses to go to the elementaries to take a call for service when we have a call for service there. What we would like to see is a proactive approach where we use officers during the daytime to row from elementary to elementary and, and build those relationships with the students, the staff, the parents, and also provide maybe some instruction, attend PTA meetings. They would take ownership in those elementary campuses, and they would have that, that visible presence that the middle schools and the high schools have now.
Yeah. Okay. I guess I'm not totally convinced on that one, but we'll take that offline. Yeah. I somewhat understand, but I don't know if it's necessarily our responsibility to build relationships with the police officers on an elementary level. So I mean, I, I see the mechanics of us being able to respond and those kinds of things, but I don't know if that's our responsibility to build that, those relationships. But we could take that offline, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Do we have additional questions? Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Okay, so since we're on talking about safety and security, there was, you mentioned, Mr. Gibson, in the report about the locking systems and the door closures. Was that, were those in external doors, or was that, were those internal doors, or do you remember?
I would need to look at the report. Let me look at the report.
I couldn't, I, we can, you can answer it, maybe send a response or something, or maybe you already have. But I couldn't figure it out from reading the report, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
You're talking specifically about the, the locking mechanisms on the doors?
Yeah. Your recommendation, I think, says something about standardized locking mechanisms and enhanced door closure mechanisms.
What I can do is go back to the individual protocols that were developed for each campus and see and pull exactly what drove that recommendation.
What you were thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be.
I'd be glad to do that.
That would be great.
That would be the best way to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'd asked a question also about the Raptor system, but I, I think you answered it, so let me see if I understand it. That is that the, the information, so the, the Raptor system checks the status or searches for sexual predators off a given list, but if we don't update the system.
We're updated. It's like when you, you have to update the link, and I'm not exactly sure when the, how many times you can do it a year, but it didn't appear that we were doing it as frequently as we could have. And so we just want to make sure, we initiate the system process to make sure that we have the most current information available on the Raptor system. But it's a, it's a great system, and I think we could, the Raptor vendor has actually located it here in Houston, and they might, they might be able to help us get more functionality out of that system.
So Chief Ryder, is that something we have working into our plans?
Absolutely. So we've been using Raptor in Fort Bend ISD for 10 years, okay? Raptor is, is nothing new to us, and, and we use it every day at every facility. What Raptor does, Raptor checks registered sex offenders. So when somebody registers as a sex offender, the system is updated. I think what we're talking about here is the notification when somebody swipes their driver's license or they run through the system at the campus, then who does Raptor notify? And I think that's what we're talking about here. So what it does now, Raptor notifies our dispatcher immediately, okay, through a, through a dedicated line. It also notifies our sergeant that's over that area. So the police are notified, two different, two different people within the police department are notified instantly, and we already send somebody to that campus before the school ever calls us and says, hey, we got a hit. But Raptor also will notify a principal, an assistant principal, anybody that the school chooses to put into the notification system, and I believe it's up to three people. They'll do it by text message, they could do it by, it used to be the old pager system that tells you how old the system is. And believe it or not, when, when we took over kind of ownership of the system and life safety systems about two years ago, there were still a number of pager numbers in the system. So what we're having to do, you know, we have a big turnover in principals and assistant principals and folks that need to be notified on those campuses every year, and it's very difficult for one emergency. And it's very difficult for one emergency management coordinator to keep up with all that turnover. So, what we're recommending is the schools have the ability to go in and change who needs to be notified at their campus locally. We keep the, the supervisors and the dispatch number constant. So, we're always notified of it. No matter who gets notified from the school side, we're always notified of it. But, we're going to recommend that the campuses change who they want notified. And they have the ability to go in there and do that anytime they want.
So, they can have it on their start of school checklist or something like that. So, but, Mr. Gibb, what I heard Mr. Gibson saying was that there were some updates of the software.
My understanding.
Database list.
I'll go back and check with my, my team.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind that these site visits were done during the 1516 school year in the spring, not 1617 school year. This audit was, the reporting of this audit was pushed back into this fiscal year, which was fine. But, so there may be some of, some of this may be dated information, but I will get back with my team and check with them on, on exactly.
Okay. And I imagine that the audit committee has a task list or something that they're monitoring on all of this stuff. So, I, it's, it's fine. I'm just, I just was trying to understand the, the difference. And then, my one last question on this particular audit was about the key performance indicators. I was trying to understand, you were talking, I guess I want to know a little bit more about that. It, it sounded as if some were identified by the police department, but then there were some other things that they get, the auditors were recommending. And I wasn't too clear on what that was or if that was a, something that needed to be researched a little bit more.
We did not specifically mention the police department in our findings or recommendations. That was mentioned in the management response. So, I might pause and let the district administration respond to. I think that was reflecting efforts that they had made in connection with our recommendation up to that point. But, I'll stop and let the administration address that.
Yeah, sure. So, in the, in the recommendation there, there were a number of recommendations as examples for key performance indicators. Some were in my area from the police standpoint, some were in facilities. And so, I, I can only speak for the police department. While key performance indicators are absolutely necessary to, to use that data to, to drive our resources and our allocation, right now, we don't have anything written down that says this is a key performance indicator. So, we completely agree that KPIs need to be in place. I think one of the things that we're waiting for or that we're working towards now is a new record management system that will help us extract data that's usable so that we can maybe come up with some key performance indicators that we could drive resources. Again, right now, our staffing levels are one officer at every middle school, two officers at every high school. But, if you ask me, where's the key performance indicator that says, how do you get to that staffing level? I don't have anything written down that says that. But, but I do agree, we, we should have that written down and we can, and we're going to work towards that.
Okay, so, thank you. I, that, so, I think, Dr. Dupree, how I was reading this is, I agree, Chief, that there were some things that were mentioned maybe in the recommendation as examples that weren't necessarily in Chief Ryder's area, but this is an area I ga, I gather that's sort of under development in terms of helping us to do our planning.
Yes, I guess you're exactly right about that, especially in regards to development of the KPIs.
Okay, well, that's great. And I'll look forward to more of that in the future when we get that into our lingo that we're talking about. Okay, so, does anybody else want to turn on this particular audit or shall I keep going? Okay. All right. And I gathered from your report, Mr. Gibson, that it seems like most of the job site safety findings were, had been dealt with or had been addressed. Is that, is that correct? Or, Mr. Perez, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, they have. Now, it's, you know, it is a construction site, so at any given time, you know, you could go out there and find an open gate or, or whatever. But, we've made every attempt to address everything that was brought forward.
Okay, good. Because, of course, the safety is a really important priority. And we, it's, it's all good until something happens. And then, we, we don't want to look back and feel badly that we didn't address something that, that, that we could have addressed easily. So, thank you for following up on that. And then, Mr. Gibson, I appreciate your diligence in looking at the construction reports because as Mr. Hollyhead knows and Dr. Dupree knows, I've struggled with the construction reports and the bond reports of the different projects that have been going on and what's on the website and how to figure out what we're actually doing. So, thank you for helping to reconcile between what is on the outward facing bond program webpage, if you will, to the board level reports and helping us to see where the differences were. Because I struggled with that for a long time and thanks for getting to the bottom of it, I guess, so. And then, I had one other question on this one. Let's see if I can find the, find the page. Oh, it has to do with the recommendation about the future construction contracts. Did I understand from your recommendation that you were suggesting putting project milestones in the, in the contracts? And then, I kind of read this, reading the response that they were, you were talking about putting substantial completion dates, but, but not so much. But, I didn't hear anything mentioned about milestones. So, I'm not sure exactly who I'm addressing the question to, but can, can somebody address that?
Yes, ma'am. We, we're in the process and have been meeting with outside counsel so that we can go ahead and make some adjustments to all future contracts. Obviously, the ones that are already in place are, are in place as such, but future contracts, we're looking at going ahead and putting in some, you know, dates that we can tie them to as far as when we have to have substantial completion and, and all of those different milestones.
Okay, great. Okay, and then, thank you to, I sent some other questions in earlier that were kind of more geared towards the construction department. So, thank you for answering those questions. And I think that concludes my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Rice?
I just want to thank the audit committee for this past year, which insisted of yourself and Mr. Rosenthal. And thank you, Mr. Gibson. We're, we're performing a legal mandate by the state in conducting these audits. And most of these audits are designed to make sure we're following best practices and not to play gotcha. And we have policies and practices in place that many times have been around for decades and sometimes they need to be tweaked. And that's what these audits reveal. And so, we feel very comfortable that while we're not perfect, we have a lot of good things underway. We have some recommendations that are being addressed and we're moving on down the road. Thank you very much, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And thank you, Mr. Gibson, for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Next, we're going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act under chapter 551 and the sections listed in the board agenda and for purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.